Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Due to the current public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. The meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the town's website, www.pennfield.org, and on the Town of Pennfield's government access channel 1303. The meeting will also later be transcribed. If you would like to address the board on any public hearing matter, there will be specific public participation opportunities for each application after the board responds to the application's presentation with its questions and concerns. How can you participate? You can do so by calling 340-8771, and we suggest you do that early, and you'll be on hold until it's your turn. Or you can also submit electronically through the town's website at www.pennfield.org. Tonight's meeting will start with our work session. We have to tend to a few procedural matters and then some tabled matters. After we're done with the work section, we session, we will go right into our public hearings tonight. We only have one application. The applicant will come up and address the board. The board will have questions, and then, as I said, we'll open it up to any comments from the public. We'd like to say that we think the town does a really good job of informing neighbors of their right to be heard at this meeting by sending postcards to neighbors that live within a certain distance of a property, which is the subject of an application. The town also requires the applicants to post signs on the property so people driving by can take notice. The town also publishes the agendas on its website and here at the town hall, and we certainly do appreciate any input that we get. With that being said, I ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. All right, let's get into the work session, and the first order of business is the approval of minutes from the November meeting. We've had them. Everyone, I'm sure, has looked them over. May I have a motion to approve or any adjustments?
I just have a question. I'm not seeing which correction you made for me.
Which one? Which one what?
On the minutes. You said there was a correction made.
A question?
A correction.
A correction.
Oh, the correction was, it was, hold on. I gotta look at the old ones.
I think it had to do with Seeker, didn't it?
It did.
It was the type of Seeker.
It was Seeker, that's right.
Right.
It was, though, you called one as an unlisted action.
Oh, I did.
But I also typed in, put an X on negative declaration, and that's not.
Right.
So I took it off.
Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you for catching it.
Okay. We have that correction noted. Any further discussion?
I think I don't vote because I wasn't here, correct?
Fair enough. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, so we'll have Andres, a motion to approve, and Mike, well, Mike, would you rather have the motion to approve?
Let's give it to Mike.
Give it to Mike.
It's a holiday spirit.
Merry Christmas, Mike. Happy Holidays. There you go. Mike made the motion to approve the minutes. Andres seconded.
Seconded, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Let's see. The tabled applications, first one on the list is 1998 Empire Boulevard. So I think the applicant is here on this, and if I'm not mistaken, we tabled it to get some input on the safety of the drive-up window and maybe some more information about how traffic would flow in that plaza. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And Andy, do you mind just sort of summarizing what we've received since the last meeting?
Sure. We, the planning board actually reviewed the proposed site plan with the additional signage, and they were okay with it. They conditionally approved it pending the review and approval of this board. Canadega National Bank was also involved, and the main concern was with regards to the traffic from both the bank and the Fire Cross Pizza, making sure that there weren't any problems with the traffic maybe crisscrossing with each other. I could pull up that site plan if you'd like.
Yeah, and just continuing in that, and the town engineer has reviewed that and satisfied that it could proceed in a safe manner. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay.
The site plan, I can't get it to turn right side up, but you can see the signage here.
I can explain if anybody has any question on the signage.
Anybody have any questions on the signage?
No.
Makes sense.
There was one thing in addition. The planning board made a determination that the, if you see the watch for cross-traffic sign that's proposed for the side of the road or the drive-through there.
Yeah.
There was, they requested that another similar sign be posted immediately adjacent to the pickup window so that it was right in front of the people that were picking up their orders, and they didn't have to look across the way to see the sign.
Okay.
Just a more of a reminder.
We can, even though it's not depicted on this plan, we can make that a condition. Anything else?
No, I mean, I think our biggest thing was if the town engineer said that, you know, if there wasn't any issues in terms of where the traffic flow and sightline and things like that, then, I know that was my big weight.
Yeah, and, you know, as depicted on there, Canadega National has both a teller window and an ATM. I use the ATM once a week, really twice a week, but my wife only thinks it's once a week. But.
Luckily, this isn't recorded or anything.
Like she watches. But in any event, I've never, you know, there's a lot of room for queuing there, and I've just, I've never seen that many cars. But it's good. It's good that the tenant spoke and input was given, and the engineer reviewed it, so.
I mean, and if anything, with banking, we're doing more and more online and remotely, so I don't think traffic is ever going to increase. I think it's just going to further decrease.
Yeah, especially when COVID is done. Yeah, they have had an uptick in the teller when, I mean, the branches were closed for a while, but they are open now.
Okay.
So, okay. All right, anything else from anyone? Okay. So then the application is for a conditional use permit for the operation, and then also special permits for the two-building mounted signs, and then the graphics too, I think, Andy, is that right?
Yes.
All right, well, I'm gonna, I'm going to first, on Seeker, make a motion to declare this an unlisted action, and then further to issue a negative declaration.
I'll second.
Okay. So you get that? Christine, I made the motion on Seeker unlisted. Andres made, and Negdek and Andres seconded. Any further discussion on Seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And on the application itself, whoops, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the requests. I think it's a good use for the property. We've had businesses there before that really, even though the owners, from what I saw, worked pretty hard, it's a, it can be a tough location because it's off the road, so I do think the drive-up may help here, and I'm glad that we have the town engineer and the neighboring property, or neighboring tenant, I should say, all working together to make sure it's safe. So certainly part of my motion is going to be that it's constructed in a manner approved pursuant to plans authorized by the town engineer, including that extra sign that Andy mentioned. And as far as the signage goes, yes, they are requesting more, but again, for the reasons that I've stated. I've seen it myself, hard work, good businesses with good products, just not be able to make it. These folks have an established place, I think in Henrietta, so I'm all in favor of doing what we can to give it them a little bit of a head start here. So that's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay. So my motion to approve is discussed, and Marie seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Okay.
Good luck.
Yep.
Yeah, and happy holidays, everyone.
You too.
Thank you.
All right. The second tabled application is 1099 Plank Road. Mr. Wilson here?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can, we can hear you. Mike, can you hear him?
I can, yes.
All right. I know that you gave a further submission. Can you, can you just quickly, let's say in five minutes, go through it?
I'm sure if you want me to share it, or do you guys have it?
Share it would be nice.
All right, hold on one second. Oh, oh, okay.
Maybe Andy can pull it up, although then, no, maybe he can't.
I could.
I'm gonna be able to share it right here. You guys seen it all right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So I'll try to move through it quickly. I did try to send it out to you guys ahead of time.
Yep.
So I just wanted to go through an overview of the original request, the justification, because you guys had some questions about the justification, the considerations that I believe are required for the variance request, and I wanted to answer those, and then go through maybe the previous questions raised, and then some other options that you guys had asked me about. So original request, I won't spend too much time here, but was the construction utility barn, provides space for storing, repairing, restoring, excuse me, storing, repairing and restoring various privately-owned vehicles. It was a 75 by 50 with a 10-foot lean-to, which ultimately added to be a 70 by 75. So from a justification standpoint, there's some questions around why so much space I wanted to capture, you know, between the two classic cars, a pontoon boat, the jet skis, a tractor, the tractor attachments, and a couple of trailers, and then a small lawnmower, as well as some of the space for, you know, a metal working shop where the car lot could go, the general buffers to be able to move the vehicles around. Then ultimately, I came to about 3,500 square feet. And then I went down through the area variance considerations, whether it's an undesirable change, not introducing the first large barn in the area. I also, you know, in our discussions last time, the statement was made, well, those barns were constructed, you know, back before we had those guidelines, so those guidelines and the limitations pointed out, there was a couple of large structures that are more modern just down the road. Also recognize though that those, you know, have more acreage from a property perspective, but a lot of them went out there, but the large structures bigger than the homes that are there. Talked about, little through the value of my property, I believe, or the investment. I'm not looking to make a small investment, it's sizable. Has existing buffering. I did want to call out that we'll add more buffering, as you guys made recommendations or you believe that there's need, as well as discussions I've had with our neighbors across the street. From benefits side, could I do it with some other method you wanted to go through? You know, I could annually store them outside the property, on the property, it doesn't provide the physical security that the structure would, and I think it would lead to a negative aesthetic, having wrapped vehicles on the property. Storage units can be expensive and really no return, and I do need access to some of the vehicles throughout the year. I did talk about from a hobby space perspective, need varying space types, access to larger tools, space to move the vehicles around. You know, I went through the different options there, you know, obviously I'm using my residential garage. This causes me at times to leave my vehicles outside, and then, you know, doing work in the garage, the jack stands and jacks isn't as safe as using a lift as well as using molars and torches in the garages. Probably not as safe as doing it in a metal structure that I'm doing. As a substantial, I recognize that, you know, this is, from your guys' perspective, a substantial work last thing, but also that I'm doing my best to meet my needs without any future consideration, not trying to make it bigger than what I think I need, alignment with other structures in the area, space surrounding smaller than the majority of the other barns. I did stake it out, and, you know, when I went out and staked it out, there's still plenty of space around the structure, it's not consuming the spaces there, and I believe that it provides a better aesthetic than placing the vehicles out on the property for all season. The fourth, you know, is it have an adverse effect on the physical and environmental conditions? I don't believe that it does. Building will not, you know, have an adverse effect, not removing any existing trees or foliage, there's some dead trees that I haven't taken out anyways. There's no significant excavation, no impact to residences, and it will obviously follow the local state regulations. Actually, I had some conversations with Andy this week about that. And then finally, you know, is it difficult to be self-created? Obviously, my hobbies and the vehicles I have is self-created, you know, I obviously, you know, chose to have these vehicles, but it's use of my private property through the hobbies and just trying to safely store the vehicles without having a negative aesthetic in the area. And I recognize that they can be, they have expenses associated to them, so I'm willing to put more of an investment in trying to, you know, have it as positive as possible. From previous questions, can I continue to handle it? My current solutions are very ad hoc. I've got one trailer in the backyard, I've got my neighbor behind me that was gracious enough to let me store in his structures, I've got my brother-in-law who's let me put a vehicle in, but obviously that's not sustainable from my perspective. I want my vehicles nearby so I can work on them, as well as I don't believe, you know, storing them outside is a safe thing for both potential, any potential security risk or, you know, to keep them out of the elements. What additional buffering? I'm willing to add buffering. You know, I'm talking with the cushions across the street, I buffer to put up evergreen trees to help buffer the space, I'm willing to do that. I would like some guidance on, you know, what, what I have offered, have them come over and say where would they like the trees. I'm willing to do that. There was a question of whether I could put the structure behind my residence. You know, my initial answer on the spot was, hey, that's where I host people, the kids play, they ride their bikes back there, but then, you know, upon further consideration, that's with my septic system, the leach lines go, so obviously not a great solution. You can't put a barn on top of that. What would I do if I don't get the variance? You know, I'd likely clear some of that space over there to store the vehicles, invest in wrapping them annually to protect them from the elements, put some lighting from that and some cameras out from a security perspective, do the best I could to secure them. There's a question about water and sewer. Eventually, I'd like to have a space, like use the bathroom to cut down the foot back to the house, and, you know, working on vehicles could be messy, I'd like to be able to wash my hands and, you know, wash dust off the things and, you know, obviously doing so without pouring any chemicals down the drain would not do that, but, you know, have a working facilities in the structure in the future, not likely even do that out of the gate. And then from an options to consider, obviously, my initial option is my preference, excuse me, my, the first option, which is my preference, is to just remove the lean-tos, they were there because I felt like they would have a better look, give it a little more flexibility, that would take it to 3,600 square foot. It's 200 square foot larger than my residence, it's got limited negative impact to achieving the primary vehicles that I have. So that's my preference. Option two, remove the lean-to and downsize to the size of the residence. I think, you know, this gets to 3,400 square feet, smaller, there'd be some challenges to that, you know, with space, and, but, you know, that's an option. And, you know, option three, I think Andres said last time, we approved 3,000 square feet when I build it. Obviously, that's an option, it's smaller, but doesn't need the space, meaning something would have to be stored outside, which I, you know, would be unfortunate, would have something outside that would have negative impact as well. So I went through those. In the appendix, I just drew out each of the original request, the different options to understand how the space would be used and configuration of the space, and, yeah, that's, I tried to do my best to outline everything, lay things out in more maybe clearer fashion, and then address some of the questions that Andy had on that.
Thank you. So currently, your application is for what size? I guess, you know, because what we really need to know is, you know, what are you, what are you asking for right now? Are you coming back and saying, I'm gonna, you know, I'm looking at this now, I'm gonna do a 3,000-something square foot, or I'm gonna do, or I want to stay with my 5,000-square foot? What's the, what's the final ruling after you were thinking about this?
Yeah, so Andres, I think that based upon your request, I would, you know, and the request of, hey, would you size it down? I think my request, my preference is option one, at 3,600 square foot. I think that's, that meets my needs clearly with what I've laid out. I don't know that I would fall in the sword, though, if it went to 3,400 square feet. I don't know that 3,000 square feet is something that I would support.
I don't have any further questions. I'm just more getting a little more clarity on which one he was looking at. It looks, it sounds like the 3,400 is where.
Yeah.
We were currently at.
I have an additional question.
Go ahead, Marie.
Maybe it's a question for Andy. The Cushman's made reference to torches and some painting equipment. Are there any requirements, safety features, that have to be incorporated into this building?
See, there's a difference if it's a single-family residential use as opposed to a commercial business use. Commercial business use has more strict requirements, I guess, for protection and that sort of thing.
So that's done for safety?
Yeah, the building code comes into play for that, and it has requirements for, you know, fire safety and things like that. For this type of a use, which is residential use, there aren't any requirements. I mean, other than complying with the manufacturer's requirements for the equipment.
Right.
That sort of thing.
All right.
Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
I guess one of the things, I'm just having a hard time with, this is, you know, in a sense, 200% larger than what's allowed by code. You know, we're looking at, you know, twice, twice the size of what's allowed, and it's such a large variance, and then I start thinking, what happens if everyone that has a parcel in that area or everywhere starts going, well, we did 200% for this, I've got a 15-acre parcel, I've got a 40-acre parcel, I've got a, you know, just, you know, where is it? You know, and since we, you know, where's it stop? Because we have a code that basically stipulates the larger the lot, the larger the accessory structure, you know, so it works up. You know, if you have a half-acre lot, you can do a 200-plus or minus square foot shed. You know, if you have a three-acre, that's, you know, 1,000-plus. It keeps getting bigger that way. And so I guess, you know, in a sense, I think about that, and that makes sense for a scale factor when I say, this is what's, you know, this is what's allowed in an area because you have a larger parcel, you're spread, you know, it's a little more spread out. And I realize he's in rural residential, which is kind of that buffer area before you get to agriculture-type, you know, zoning, which is much more, you know, the parcels are larger, they require a larger footprint in a sense. So it's that fine line where his neighbor's down the street that he, I think the two parcels that he quoted, those are in more of the agriculture, that's a different zoning than where he is. He's kind of that buffer between suburban and then turning into ag. So, you know, are barns thought of? Yes, but I'm still having a tough time with something this large. I don't know what you guys think, but it's just, it's.
I think the problem I have is not only the size of it as it relates to the variance, but also the size of it as it relates to the house, too. So I think.
Yes.
The fact that it's, even at 3,400, it's what, 88 square feet less than the house? I mean, that's essentially a second house on the property.
I have to agree. That's where I'm getting stuck, and to your point, it's just, I'm not sure we want to set that precedent and start going down that path. We're seeing more and more of these.
I mean, how many, we're getting pole barns a lot.
We're getting pole barns a lot.
Big pole barns.
Yes, there have been different, you know, the size of the property has always been taken into consideration, and whether it's bigger or smaller than the primary structure.
Yeah, that's for sure, and, you know, I'm not, I guess that variance request wasn't really specifically addressed. You know, I need a structure this large because, so maybe it was in that sense, but there's no question, a pole barn that's as large as a primary residence is something that I think is not allowed by that statute where the secondary structure can't dominate the first one.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry, if I can, I don't.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I think the last time you were discussing, there was, you know, hey, it's 1% of the property, it's one variance, and larger than your primary structure is the second. You know, I believe the second option I'm bringing forward is to try to take off the request for second variance, so then the conversation, you know, I'm trying to remove some amount of impact to you guys on the amount of variances that you have to approve. I believe there's also one for the structure being over 20 square, 20 feet tall. You know, if it does get sized down, I don't know that I need it to be 20 foot tall, so then really it's a valid variance request for being larger than 1% of the property. And that's where, you know, I'm trying to bring forward to say, here's what I'm going to use it for, here's the space that I need in order to do that, you know, and that's where, you know, I think we're at a point where I, if you guys are saying, hey, that's too big, is a 3,000 square feet okay? Like, that's where, it's like a trade-off for me to understand what the implications of that is, given that I do have these things. I have vehicles, I have a boat, I have jet skis, I have a tractor, and that I need to be able to store them and store them safely, and store them in a situation where, you know, it's trying to be as aesthetically pleasing as possible. And that's where, you know, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm not trying to, you know, build something outrageously large and outside of what I need, and that's why I wanted to outline, you know, the, here's, here's the thought process that I've gone through, here's what I'm trying to do to be a good citizen of the community, to try to keep things out of public view. I think that last time it was, hey, it's a corner lot, you know, it's going to be seen. If I've got a boat wrapped sitting over there, or we got vehicles wrapped sitting over there, I think that's less aesthetically pleasing, and less in keeping the neighborhood than it is if it's a whole structure that you store it all, protect it all, and keep it out of view.
Yeah, nobody, by the way, is.
I have any comment?
Go ahead, Mike, go ahead.
I just don't see a large barn on this particular site. I mean, there's other barns in the area, but this one, it almost looks like a separate lot, separate from the house. You put a large barn on this, it almost looks like the type of thing our code tries to prevent, with accessories structure on the property that doesn't have a main structure. I mean, that's what it's going to look like. I don't know how you can put sufficient water in there. And I guess the other thing is, and I'm not trying to be smart, but you destroy yourself off-site. I mean, there is alternatives to allowing you to do your hobby.
Yeah, and I think I try to, like, I try to approach that. You're right, I could do that. I could store it outside. That means I'd be commuting someplace to do that, being away from my family. You know, I usually work on my vehicles after the kids go to bed, you know, between 7:30 and 11. and eleven. If I'm driving to go do that, there's times I need to get to my tractor, there's times I need to get to my vehicles to work on them. So, yeah, I, I, I get that that's an option, that's not a preferred option by any means. Um, and then, you know, in response to, it seems like a separate lot, I purchased the property with the hopes that I'd be able to use that space. If I can't use that space to put a structure on it, I, I'm, I'm stuck in, what am I gonna use the space for? Is this gonna be, uh, an open lot with wildflowers in it? Like, I, what, what can I use it for then if I can't use it to put a structure on to store my property?
Well, you can, you can put a structure on that, one that, one that complies with the code.
Sure, and, and I, and I can do that. I can put a thousand square foot barn on it, and then I'll have to, you know, my response would be then to have some amount of space to store the other things that are there.
Yeah, no doubt about it. And by the way, I, I just want you to know, nobody here is questioning your motive or your intent. You have done a very good job, honestly, of making the best case that you can. Um, it just may not prevail, to be, to be quite honest, but, uh, you know, your, your sincerity is, is not doubted by anybody on the board. And, and, you know, your property's a nice property, looks like it's well-kept to me the times that I've, that I've seen it. So please don't, um, you know, don't, don't, don't take any of this personally. It's, we have had a lot of pole barn applications as of late, and we've been pretty flexible, in my opinion, with some of the applications we've had. But I, I don't know that we've granted one, um, that's, that's double, uh, when the end result is gonna be a pole barn larger than the residence. I just don't recall that, and, and I've been doing this for twenty years now.
So then, from a flexibility perspective, uh, I think Andres had said before, you know, if we granted three thousand, if you build it, you know, obviously, that's an option I have on the list. Is that, is that where you guys start to get comfortable? I, I struggle to understand comfortability, you know, I obviously don't participate in these meetings on a regular basis.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm leading with, this is what I feel I need in, in a sincere fashion. Um, but, you know, I'm willing to have a dialogue if you said, hey, we feel comfortable at three thousand. If you're, I, I just, I just don't know, you know, I, I'm trying to do the best I can.
And, and, and we are, too. You, you certainly seem like a nice person, again, that's, uh, you're, you're a, a town resident, uh, that has a nice property, and, and you're sincere. I, you know, I have to tell you, though, you're the applicant. So for us to say three thousand is okay, and you say, okay, that's good. You, Andres asked you a few minutes ago, what's your application at this point? You said the thirty-four hundred square feet. Um, and, you know, we could go back and forth all night long like, uh, a bidding war here, and that's really not, we're, we're really not
Yeah, that, that's fair.
supposed to do. So, you know, don't, don't, don't say something that you don't want, you know, uh, I, I, you know, I don't know. If, if, if thirty-four hundred is what you want, then say thirty-four hundred.
Yeah, that's fair. It's thirty-four hundred, and if, if it heads to the path where you guys don't approve it, then I would under, need guidance. Am I gonna be back applying for a three thousand next month? Um, and then, is that gonna be declined, and then I'm coming back in the twenty? Like, that's where I don't understand the process well enough.
Yeah.
Um, yes, the request is for thirty-four hundred, that's my, that's my, you guys came to me and said, what, what would you consider knocking off, uh, to help us from a variance perspective? That's what I came back with. Um, I believe that's what I, you know, is a fair response to your request. Um, but then if that doesn't get approved, then I still need a structure. So I'm gonna be coming back with another application likely, and then it'll be just a drawn-out use of our time, you know, until we get to a thought that you guys feel comfortable.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, I, I can't argue with, with that. By the way, the rule is if you're denied, you have to wait a year unless it's a substantially different application, which presents a whole nother issue for the board to consider as well.
That's, that's unfortunate. I appreciate you sharing that, um, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, I don't...
I have nothing further.
Yeah, any, anything else? Go ahead.
I'd just like to add something that, um, Steve Cushman inquired. Uh, he did send an email.
Yeah, I, I, I was trying to find him. I don't, I, I may have deleted it from, but, and I don't know, Mr. Wilson, if you're aware, sorry to preempt you, Andy.
That's okay.
But your neighbors across Plank Road did send emails. I don't know if you've seen them or not. I'm kind of curious as
Andy sent them to me. The email was, um, email that Andy shared with me was from yesterday.
Yeah, okay.
I believe it was from Darlene Cushman.
Right.
Um, that was after, uh, you know, you guys had asked, hey, please sit down with your neighbor.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, which I, which I did for an hour, uh, and we went through, uh, the same content, even in some more detail, asked her as many questions as I could, uh, invited them over to take a look at where I'd taken out, even offered, like, I'm not tied to the specific location, so if it's lived further west, or east, excuse me, further south, like, is there options, you know, and unfortunately, um, they didn't take me up on that offer for me at the time it didn't work. Uh, so I did have that, but then she followed up with the email afterwards, you guys. Uh, it was when I did call Andy on Wednesday, just to understand whether the concerns raised and the, uh, New York State guidance that was cited was applicable, same question that I think, um, was asked previously. Uh, Andy, you know, coached me or, or, uh, gave insight that it wasn't. It was residential code and, and the codes that were being cited were for commercial. Um, I also believe I had sent me the letter from, uh, my neighbor to the south, Mr. D'Angelo, Mike D'Angelo, uh, in support of the structure as well, so.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure you, you were aware of those. For the last five minutes, I've been trying to pull them up, and I can't find them on my computer. But if you've, you've seen those, and, uh, you know, I'll give you an opportunity if you want to respond to them, but I think it's really just, uh, it would be a reiteration of what you've already, uh, which you've already stated.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you one more thing, Mr. Wilson. Andy's not gonna be happy with me, but, you know, we've had occasions where people have had applications denied, and then they come in, sit and talk with Andy, and, uh, try to, try to work things out for at future applications. So keep that in mind. Andy's a reasonable and thoughtful guy, and he's good at coaching.
No, Andy's been great. I've, I've talked to him several times in this process. He's been awesome. I, I truly appreciate his time, Andy.
Okay, well, and again, just for the record, because we don't have the emails, but, uh, the, the Cushman's who are across the street did submit emails in, in opposition to the application, too. So, all right, anything else? I think we can proceed then.
Yep. Andres? Uh, let's see, so for seeker, uh, this is a type-two action with no further review required.
Second.
Okay. Andres makes a seeker motion to declare it a type-two action, and Matt seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, let's see, and as the application currently was presented at thirty-four hundred square feet, um, which would eliminate the need for the, um, larger-than-home variance as well, I believe, for that, um, aspect, because I think the residence was thirty-four eighty-eight, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
Um, so that would eliminate that. Um, you know, and the, I think, as I said before, I think, you know, thirty-four hundred, we, when, when we spoke, it's still twice the size of what code allows right now. Um, and I just, you know...
More than twice the size.
Correct, correct, yes. Um, you know, it's, it's more than twice, and I don't know if we've ever granted a variance that large, um, that I can remember for an accessory structure. Uh, and I, you know, it's just, and I don't think any things, you know, there's, there's, there's other options, um, that have been put out there. There's other options currently that are being utilized that aren't, you know, that, that are out there. I think as, as a board, we have to look at, okay, what's the, what's the minimum that we would grant, and, you know, are there other options? And I think there's other things that have been, um, said. They may not be ideal, um, but, you know, I think as, right now, uh, my, my voice will be to say, I want to deny this application for the thirty-four hundred, just, it's, it's too large. Um, and I think I went back when I talked about the code. You know, the code is actually set up quite nicely where the larger the parcel, the larger the accessory structures, it's, it's made, it's made that aspect where it's one, it's one percent of your yard, um, for the, for the square footage. And it increases to allow you to have larger structures. That's why, you know, farms and things like that have larger barns because they have, you know, hundreds of acres.
Or they've been around for a hundred years.
Or they've been along, or like, like, you know, for Penfield, a lot of these structures have been here for a long, long time, prior to the code. Um, and, you know, so I, I just, it's, 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 it's difficult because, you know, I'm not one to, um, I, I don't enjoy denying things because I always say, I, you know, I'd like to let people do what they want on their homes and their yards, um, things. But, you know, I had to look at, if every neighbor said, I'm gonna build an accessory structure twice, twice the size of my allowable size, and we're gonna have a lot of just barns all over Penfield-type thing, and that's not, I think
Big barns.
Right, big barns, and that's not, you know, that's not in character with, you know, the residences. That's not what, you know, when, you know, the town just went and bought a large parcels of green space because the town was demanding for more open space that's uncluttered, um, that's left open. And I just look at the direction of what, you know, the neighborhood, the people, whatever you're, looks for in this town, and a lot of them are saying, you know, we don't want large structures, and that's why the town code has developed the way it is.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think those are all points well-taken. All right, so we have a motion to deny. Did we get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Matt seconded it. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, nobody opposed it? Okay. All right, Mr. Wilson, well, uh, sorry it didn't turn out the way you wanted, but, um, anyway, continue to enjoy your property as best you can, in a way that you, you would like to. Okay, so, um, let's move on then. Anybody need a break? We're good? All right, we can go right into the, uh, public hearings then, and if we could have the first one called.
Aubrey D. Smith III, ninety-seven Guy Grace Lane, Webster, New York, one four five eight oh. Request an area variance under section two fifty dash fourteen point three of the code to allow a garage addition with less setback than required under section two fifty dash five point one dash F one of the code at ninety-seven Guy Grace Lane. The property is currently or formerly owned by Aubrey D. Smith III and Sonia A. Smith, and is zoned R dash one dash twenty. SPL number zero nine three point one six dash two dash three eight point one. This is application number twenty Z dash zero zero four four.
Okay, Trey, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Go ahead with your application.
First of all, thank you on this snowy night. Appreciate it. I also appreciate everything you guys do. Um, so, um, we enjoy our house, we enjoy the neighborhood. I, um, it seems like this is classic Cardinal. Um, I've got a couple of classic cars, I also have a motorhome, and, um, we're looking to expand the garage so that we can keep the motorhome off the driveway, um, in the summer, and I can also keep the cars all under one roof. I, too, am storing cars elsewhere off property, and, uh, this would give you the opportunity to bring everything in-house under one roof in a nice, clean showcase kind of environment, which is, you know, what, what they deserve. So with that, um, you know, Guy Grace kind of winds around, as you can see, um, on this aerial view, and, um, we're looking at, um, extending the garage out, um, directly down the driveway, um, exactly where it's rectangle, where it's off. And the, that, that southeast corner, right at the back of that dark-colored car, uh, requires a variance. Um, and I have about, um, it's gonna be about a nine hundred and sixty square foot addition. Um, the variance is depicted right there. It's that small corner. Um, I currently have a forty-foot variance, which I assume you know. Um, that buildout, which is a buildout designed to accept the length of our motorhome, um, pushes it just, just over the variance so that we need, uh, at least thirty-five point eight feet, as you can see, which is about a four point one, I think, foot variance, which consumes, I think, about, if I were to guess, about ten square feet on the nine hundred and sixty square foot addition. Um, I don't know if you've seen the, um, architectural, um, elevation drawings, um, but, um, I think architecturally, it, um, so you, looking at that, um, you can see where the existing garage is, with the two windows. Um, to the right of that would be the addition. And, uh, down below is the, uh, driveway view. Um, does require one extra-high door so that we can get the motorhome inside rather than leaving it outside. Um, but again, it's, uh, you know, maintaining the, uh, one garage requirement on the house, uh, but giving me the double-deep I need to store a couple of cars and, uh, the motorhome, and also, um, giving us a standard garage space for our, uh, regularly-paved driver cars.
Excellent, thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you, Andres, for reminding me. If anybody has comments on this, they can call three four zero eight seven seven one or file a comment electronically at penfield.org. Presently, I don't, uh, I don't see any comments, so go ahead.
Excellent, thank you. Um, so, just, just a few questions. Uh, the garage that's proposed, uh, I guess on the aesthetics, is it gonna match the existing homes? Uh, you know, will the siding be the same, roof be the same, shingles, things like that?
Identical, yes, yeah. The, the roof is new, that's gonna be very easy to match, and the siding is standard final siding.
Okay. Um, and it looks like, you know, I sense you described a little bit about your street there. Um, you're on a curve, and I think then again, um, it's compounded even more that your home sits slightly askewed to the property lines. I actually looked at your property. I don't know if you even have a square corner on your property, it looks like, so
No, I don't think I do.
So in a sense, you know, it's not typical where you look to your neighbor just to the side, um, where if you were to add a garage, you're not, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a different orientation where it actually makes it difficult that, for you to stick out that way, I think. It, it's, in a sense, is what you're saying, is that front corner is really all that's, um, going to be part of the variance, that little four-foot section, I think, that we talked about there. Um, is that, and that's correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. I don't, I don't really have much more. This is a, this is a, in a sense, when you look at the, you know, the shape of the street and orientation of the home, makes it difficult to do much anything else on there.
Okay, I don't see any comments. Uh, any other questions? Mike?
I just wanted to make a comment that I think the way it's oriented, if you drive down the street, you're almost, you're almost moving parallel to the, the house and the addition, so it sort of lessens the impact of that little corner being close.
And you really can't tell, but that's, it's a, it's a big driveway. Um, I think you still have, after that addition and upspending car lengths, if you were to put them in tight, sticks easily, three wide, so there's still a lot of driveway even after the, uh, the garage addition.
Well, not if Sonia's parking the cars.
It's true.
Okay. Uh, no other questions, and I don't see anything from the public. So why don't you just handle this, Andres?
Sure thing, let's move forward with seeker. Uh, I'm gonna declare this a type-two action with no further review required.
Second.
Second.
Oh, sorry, Mike, here.
No, this is Mike.
Merry Christmas, Mike, here, you take it.
Wow, must've been a good boy this year. All right, we, Andres has made a motion to declare it a type-two action, requiring no further seeker review, and Marie seconded that. All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain on that vote, and then go ahead with the next.
Uh, let's see, and then on the, uh, application, I will, uh, move to grant the variance, um, for that corner of the garage there that's, uh, being, as it's been, um, proposed. Uh, really with the shape of the street, um, the orientation of the home, it's a, it's a fairly atypical, um, design and placement of the home where I, I think it's, it's, it's atypical design and placement of the home, where I think it's, it's difficult to do much of anything that you wouldn't require a variance at the very front. And I think the applicant's done a nice job, in a sense, of trying to fit it in just as they can with just a very small corner on there to require the variance, which is, you know, it's only four feet for that little corner. It's not like we're looking at an entire side of a home projecting out.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain. Okay, well, there you go, Trey. And I do, I do want to point out that I abstain because I live a few houses down from Trey, but I know that, Andy, you did work, you did a lot of work with Trey on Trey's original plans. Frankly, would have called for larger and more variances, and it's, it's good work by you to work with a citizen like this to put together a project that is going to enhance the house and the neighborhood. So, good job, Trey, and good job, Andy.
Absolutely, Dan. I agree with that. Thank you, Andy, and thank you, everybody else, and Merry Christmas. Very much appreciate it.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Darlene.
All right, that was our first and only application, I think, so we will stand adjourned until our next meeting, currently scheduled for January 21st, 2021. Happy holidays, happy New Year, Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate. Have a good one, and a safe one.
Take care.
All right, take care, everyone.
Bye, Mike.